We could start with a flag salute. Ben, would you lay this in place?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, roll call.
Mr. Rakucci.
Here.
Mr. Brenton.
Here.
Mr. Denio.
Here.
Mr. Severson.
Here.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Johnson, absent.
We're good to go. Report from the Planning Director.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of items to update your commission on. This past Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors approved a Williamson Act contract out in the North Lincoln area. While these aren't items that come before your commission, we thought it would be of interest to you. And the Dry Creek-Greenway Plan and the associated EIR, which was previously reviewed by your commission, was approved unanimously by the Board of Supervisors.
Where did they approve the Williamson Act?
It's out in the North Lincoln area.
How many acres was it?
It was over 100 acres.
Well, pretty good size.
And we don't get involved in that, but when they go to pull it out, we seem to see them.
Correct. And so it's important to note that while the county is no longer receiving monies from the state regarding the Williamson Act, the county still finds it very important for the overall health of the county to continue to approve Williamson Act contracts. So they continue their support of that program. The, I guess it was your last hearing up in Grand LeBach and up at Tahoe, the Homewood Mountain Resort Project, which your commission recommended to the board, that project has been appealed, and on Tuesday, there will be a special hearing up at Tahoe on that. So when you come back in December, we'll update you on the status of that appeal.
Are the supervisors also going to hear their portion of it, or is some resuming?
Yes, they will.
So it'll all be at once?
It will be the totality of the project. Something that might be of interest to you, on December 6th, the board will be having a special hearing in this room right here regarding the regional sewer issue for the Auburn area. December 8th, your planning commission, we have quite a few items on there. We have a general plan amendment, rezone, and conditional use permit for Sierra Sun Villas. This is a project up on Donner Pass Road across from Sugar Bowl Ski Resort. There's a ZA appeal regarding a variance in the Granite Bay area. This is on a setback from Miners Ravine. There's also a ZA appeal for Granite Bay Meadows, another subdivision in Granite Bay, regarding setbacks. And there's a ZA appeal of the Truckee Airport Industrial Park condominium project. There was a concern with the adequacy of parking, and that issue has been appealed to your commission. Lastly, there will be a workshop on the Granite Bay Community Plan. A draft of that document has been provided to you today, so you can look at that and be prepared for the workshop presentation on the 8th. And lastly, on January 12th, Target, located over here in North Auburn, will be coming in for an expansion, and we will also have the election of officers at that meeting. Any questions or comments?
What was the date for it? Did it begin on January 12th? I'm sorry.
December 8th.
And December 12th, we're having another meeting? No?
No. There will just be one meeting, December 8th, January 12th. I'm sorry, I may have misspoken. January 12th. So just one planning commission meeting for November, and then one for December also. Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to make comments about anything that is not on today's agenda? Being none, being at least 10:05, let's go on to the PCWA Heritage Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning Commissioners. Staff request consideration of an application to add an historic residence to the Placer County Official Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. And the Board of Supervisors is the sole authority to designate a historic resource in the official register. In order to present this request to the Board of Supervisors, though, we need a positive four-person vote from your commission today. A bit of history of the site. It was developed in 1880 by Peter Hallbaum. Hallbaum Residence grew to a fruit orchard and ranch. During World War II, the ranch fell to neglect due to local labor enlistment into the armed forces and the internment of Japanese Americans, many of whom worked on those orchards. Fruit production continued to decline during and after World War II as the labor force was reluctant to return to farming, and we faced increased global competition. Today, there are remnant pear orchards and a few orange trees. They probably also grew plums and apples as well. The site passed through family members through the years, and it was eventually acquired by PCWA. This is a picture of the Hallbaum Residence itself. As mentioned in the staff report, the site was evaluated for cultural historic resources when PCWA Board of Directors approved construction of the Foothill Phase II Water Treatment Plant on this site and an adjacent parcel to the west there. A cultural resources report was prepared by Environmental Science Associates, and the report found that the site meets eligibility criteria under the National Historic Preservation Act and is therefore eligible for listing into the National Register of Historic Places. In December 2010, the zoning administrator approved a minor use permit to convert the residents to private offices for PCWA employees, and at this time, PCWA would like to add the Hallbaum Residence to the county register. As I mentioned, the cultural resources report found that the residence is eligible for inclusion into the National Register, so it's certainly eligible for inclusion into the county register as well. Some of the qualifications that needed to be met here, the site is associated with persons significant in our past. Peter and his brother Mattis, who took over the orchard afterwards, after Peter's death. Peter is significant for the establishment of the ranch and contributions to the Newcastle Fruit Growers Union. Mattis is significant for a continuation of the ranch and success of the food industry in Newcastle, and he also worked closely with the hotel senator, the Cozy Spot that's out there, and he was a member of Lions Club and International Order of Odd Fellas as well. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the PCWA Heritage Center be placed in Placer County Official Register of Cultural and Historic Resources. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
I have a question. Jerry, is there any downside to the county for doing this?
I don't believe there is. Suppose there could be, I don't know, nothing really comes to mind, actually. What it does is ensures that any type of restoration which they're seeking at this point would be done in a manner that's consistent with the architecture of the type. It's a folk Victorian, good example of folk Victorian architecture, so any renovation would have to be consistent with that style and that era.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Do we have somebody from PCWA or, okay, come on up?
Can we do? Make your work today, Ron. Good morning. My name's Ron Lee, I'm the project architect for this. Hi, Rich, how are you? Long time, Larry. Okay. Alls I can do is answer questions. The idea of this whole place, as far as PCWA is concerned, they really want to make it a showpiece. The whole area right there is going to be kind of their exemplary site, so this is kind of stage one in this. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
It looks good, it looks good on the outside. Is it well-maintained inside, too?
Actually, it is. Yeah. And the changes we're talking about aren't major by any means on the inside. It's just desks and whatnot. Actually, it'll have less impact than what it's legally constituted for as far as numbers of people goes, if it was just a residence, so.
It's kind of fascinating to see the different rooms. You don't hear them labeled that way anymore on plans. I've seen there are a lot of rooms there that are typical of that era, I guess.
That's true. Sitting rooms? When's the last time you had one of those, huh?
Do you have any stairs where you can get from upstairs to downstairs in one move?
In one move? There's a main staircase.
I'm making a joke reference to the game Clue, where you can move from room to room, and then you can go downstairs. Since you have those strange rooms.
Well, they're not strange, they're actually, it's very open.
Strangely named, yeah. For our standards.
Very good. Right. Well, they had bedrooms upstairs, there's an old bath upstairs, we're taking it out. So all the bathrooms, and we're making bathrooms handicap accessible, so we're doing that, but, I mean, just as a general thumb, general rule.
Any plans to add any of the outbuildings later, or anything like that?
No, not that I know of. The house and the little shed behind it are going to stay intact.
Now, the cost of maintenance, that's going to be done by the county, not by the water agency, is that the case?
The cost of maintenance?
Yeah.
No, it's theirs.
It's theirs.
Yeah.
The county won't.
You won't have to, all you have to do is look at it and admire it.
Unless you buy the water, then you'll have to pay for it.
Well, I don't want their water, I have my own.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but I think these kind of projects that where you can preserve a unique house or area like this in the county, you know, they're very small and very localized, but they're important to our.
I agree with you.
I think our staff report pointed that out, too, so I'm happy to see the agency going for this historic designation, so it'll stay that way.
Well, they're very conscious of it, and it's kind of, it's a little jewel by itself, and they know it, and, you know, they recognize it and want to preserve it that way, so that's, you know, that's why we're here.
I think that's it. Nothing else?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to?
Good morning. I'm Melanie Barton, I'm the Placer County Museums Administrator, and I have been very interested in this project since the property was first purchased, and really applaud the PCWA for following through with requesting this designation. And I also would support them and hope that they will actually follow through and apply, submit an application for the property being listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It meets all the qualifications, or the critical qualifications, and I think it would be one more designation that would be worth following through with when they can. Another interesting project that we talked about several years ago was the possibility of, in the future, doing some sort of a museum as a part of the property where it focused on Placer County water history. And it's a perfect location for that because I'm sure, as you know, a lot of the mining ditches were eventually turned into ditches that were used for agriculture, and you can actually see a lot of that right on that one location, so it would be a very good place to do something like that, and it has a great potential for education for our schoolchildren in Placer County, and I think it would be a worthwhile program that we would certainly support and be more than glad to give all kinds of assistance and help if PCWA does decide to do that. So we're thrilled that they've applied for this application on the county register and hope that you will also support that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Being none, back to the commission.
Well, if there's no discussion, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors to add the PCWA Heritage Center to the Placer County Official Register of Cultural and Historic Resources.
Second.
A motion and a second. And a vote. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? You got it. We are five minutes early for our next agenda item. Shall we take five?
Oh, sure.
Hey, to request a general plan amendment that recognizes the Placer Parkway and Highway 65 bypass alignment on our general plan, circulation diagram. That's what it looks like today. We have the Placer Parkway. That alignment is shown there. Actually, it comes off of Sunset Boulevard. Since that time, there's been a whole bunch of work done. Sparta was the lead agency on that. They did a corridor analysis, an EIREIS. And even before this time, it was agreed to move it up to the Whitney Ranch Interchange, which is the one just north of there. Not constructed today, but it's between 12 Bridges and Sunset Boulevard. This will be a roadway that connects Highway 65, 70, 99. So it runs all the way to Sutter County. Parallel freeway, parallel to I-80, essentially. The existing Highway 65, when Caltrans is done with the bypass, will become a county-owned facility from north of Lincoln anyways. And then the existing, or sorry, the Highway 65 bypass that currently is under construction. Caltrans was the lead on that, EIREIS, did the construction plan drawings, and currently is overseeing the construction. That roadway will be open next year. I believe this is the alignment that was ultimately chosen, but just to make sure, we're gonna put the one on there that actually was designed to. And then there's some outdated text. This was talking about a corridor, or about adoption study, and that the CTC, the California Transportation Transportation Commission ultimately approves, and that has since been done.
Let me ask you a question. The existing 65 was gonna become county-maintained road after the bypass was open?
That's right, north of Lincoln. And there's, maybe on this diagram. So to incorporate these things in here, we've developed a supplemental general plan circulation diagram. The roadway north of Lincoln there, the Highway 65, it's, will be shared in Lincoln Boulevard. And just for information here, as you go through Lincoln, I believe they've decided to call it Lincoln Boulevard. And then when you get south of Lincoln, it's back to Industrial Boulevard. So it'll be named three different names as you travel up that roadway. And then the Highway 65 bypass, just showing that alignment. And again, I'm pretty sure it was consistent with what was shown on the one before that. And then the Placer Parkway. And if you notice, the old Placer, didn't mean to do that. I think I just killed it. Oh, there we go. Phew! The old Placer Parkway, sorry. This is Sunset Boulevard right here. It actually connected here. And again, since that time, the corridor analysis was done. So we're requesting the supplemental general plan circulation diagram be adopted or recommended for adoption to the board. The other things that need to change are this table 1 dash, or sorry, I-6 of the functional classification. We don't have anything in here currently that fits the Placer Parkway. The Placer Parkway is gonna be a four-to-six lane facility, ultimately freeway design. It'll have interchanges. It starts off with intersections, ultimately will be interchanges through there. And the corridor is a 500-to-1,000-foot corridor. It's 500 feet from 65 over to Foothills, or sorry, Fittiman. And then from Fittiman to continuing west goes to 1,000-foot corridor until you get back into, or until you get to Sutter County. So this is the one that you have the errata of the errata of. And part of that was to put this footnote 1 on here. And the corridor itself is just 500 to 1,000 feet, but the right-of-way itself may be smaller than that, that fits inside of this corridor. The corridor analysis that was done are five different corridors, and it's truly to identify the corridor that this would land in. And that road is gonna move around in this 1,000 feet. The right-of-way, the one that was drawn up for the analysis that was done, the roadway itself would be about 312 feet. It's got 100-foot median. It's the parkway feel. So we put that note on there to make sure that was clear. The other is the table that we need to update is this table I-7. And it'll add the Placer Parkway, and this is just by geographical area. And also the Sheridan Lincoln Boulevard. Although it's not officially relinquished to us yet, there's been a relinquishment agreement. It's in place. It's coming to us as soon as that freeway opens, the bypass opens, and again, that should be the fall of next year. So with that, we're requesting you recommend to the Board of Supervisors five items here. That they consider the final EIREIS certified by Sparta, the South Placido Regional Transportation Authority, and find it's adequate for use for county as a responsible agency. Amend the circulation plan diagram, that supplemental plan that we just looked at. Amend the circulation plan diagram, deleting that outdated text that was talking about the CTC action and the route adoption. Amend table I-6, and this is the one again of the errata of the errata, to add the limited access thoroughfare and functional classification for Placer Parkway because we didn't have anything that fit that category. And then amend table I-7, the functional classification, to add limited access thoroughfare of Placer Parkway from 65 to Sutter County, as well as the Sheridan Lincoln Boulevard. And again, it's from north of the Lincoln city limit boundary to Sheridan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just have one quick question there on the first, your first sentence up there. This EIR was certified in December of 2009. That's almost two years ago. What happened in the interim? Why is it just being processed now or?
There was, there was an EIREIS done for this. So the EIR was certified, you're right, in December. The record of decision was issued after that, and that's through the FHWA. After that, there was a challenge period we waited for. And then we were waiting to tie this with some other general plan amendment that was going to be coming forward. There's no huge rush on it, but this would be the fourth general plan amendment that would be allowed per year. And we're using that up now, just to get in front of the Board of Supervisors here in December. So we just waited. We were gonna bundle this with something, and it just never made sense to do that. But we need to get this in front of the board now. The other part of it is we're starting, and the board, hopefully, if all goes right, will be letting a contract out that'll start this tier-one analysis, again, just identified a corridor. In December, we should be going in front of the board to issue a contract to do the next level analysis that'll take the environmental document and preliminary engineering from Highway 65 to Foothills Boulevard North. I'm not sure if you, see if I can get back here. So we would like to take that all in front of the board at the same time. So this is, this is done, and then issue that contract hopefully right after that. It will go, this is Foothills Boulevard, Athens Avenue. So it will be looking at that first piece. So it's to get this all cleaned up at once.
Okay. Thank you. From the public has comments?
Well, you need to make on the record that you at least opened it, nobody showed up and closed. There is a gentleman back there. So go ahead and open the public comment.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing and give anybody who would like to an opportunity to come up. Being none, we will close it.
Mr. Chair, if we're the recommended actions that were put forth, the last two should include as amended per the errata.
Okay, I can do that. Do we need to vote on them separately, or is all five of them together? I mean, is there?
I would probably vote separately on your environmental document. And then I think you can bundle the next
Four?
Two through five together, if you like, unless there's change.
Okay, I can do that. Okay, first, I'd recommend to the Board of Supervisors as follow to consider the final EIREIS certified by the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority and find it's adequate for the use by the county as a responsible agency.
Have a motion and second? Discussion, do we need to do a roll call by this, or no? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, that carries.
And then item 2, 3, 4, and 5, I would recommend to the Board of Supervisors, as they're written here, with the 4 and 5, considering the attached errata as we received them today.
Have a motion and second? We got the second already. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. I think that puts us all through and all done? All right, meeting adjourned.